I'd like to call this public hearing to order Tuesday, October 10th, 4:45 PM. The Community Center Hill Room. This election will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, October 10th at 4:45 PM. The Littleton Community Center Hill Room is prescribed by RSA 31:95-B, Section 3, and RSA 91-A:2 to discuss the acceptance and expenditure of unanticipated money from the state, federal, or other governmental unit or private sources by this election. The source of income is from the 2016 Assistance to Firefighters Grant. The Assistance to Firefighters Grant is in the amount of $124,000 in federal dollars. The town share is $6,200, which represents 5% of the cost. The grant provides the funding for the purchase of SCBA units comprised of one backpack/harness, face piece, and two air cylinders. I'm going to ask the fire chief to further explain this, if you would.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to reiterate, we applied for and received an Assistance to Firefighters Grant in the amount of $130,200, and divided it into 95% of the funds coming from the grant, the federal grant, 5% coming from the town. The 5%, or the $6,200, has already been appropriated and encumbered from last year. We attempted last year for a similar grant, and we were denied. And in 2015, we decided to try again in 2016. We were awarded, therefore, the reason why we uncovered those funds into the next fiscal year. That buys us 21 self-contained breathing apparatus. Those are the masks and the tanks you see the firefighters wear when they go into a burning structure, at the cost of $6,200 apiece. They range between $6,100 and $7,000, depending on how fancy or the type of vehicle you want to attach to them. These will replace the 21 self-contained breathing apparatus that we currently have on our trucks. The grant will only allow us to purchase one breathing apparatus per seating position on an apparatus. That was a change back in 2011. There was a time when we were able to just put a number out there. That's not the case anymore. So we are fortunate enough to be able to get full funding for all 21 breathing apparatus. A request for proposal has been prepared. If in fact we receive approval, that request for proposal will go out. It's a bid package going out to assorted vendors, which will be advertised publicly for them to bid on the 21 SCBA.
Good, thank you, Chief.
You're welcome.
This is a public hearing, so we are open to comment pro or con from the public. We're also open to further questions, which I probably can't answer, but I bet the chief can. So, is there any public comment? We have to leave the hearing open for the 15 minutes that it was scheduled, so we will do so, and at the conclusion of that 15 minutes, we will take action on this, and then go into the regular selectmen's meeting. But in the meantime, if somebody dreams up a question, or a comment, pro or con, please feel free to speak.
I'm curious, the 21 units that are being replaced, are those just scrap? What happens here?
In the request for proposal, we have language in there in which the vendor will give us a credit for the SCBA. The harness, one cylinder, one face piece, therefore, we can use that credit if it's enough towards the purchase of something that's related to SCBA per the rules of the grant. So, we're going to rely on the vendor to take possession of them and to dispose of them as they seem fit, because currently they're out of standard. It would be very difficult for us just to sell them to another department, knowing that they're going to be nonconfined at some point. So it'll go off while having the vendor pick them up and get credit for them.
What's the life expectancy of the units?
10 years.
Did a grant by PIG for part of this last time, that you went through the rotation and replaced the tanks you may have had 10 years ago?
The ones that were replacing were purchased through a similar grant 10 years ago.
And is the reason that we're -- a particular application is passed over one year based on how much money they have available, or?
Your competition, money, priorities. In 2016, SCBA were brought back up to one of the top priorities for fire departments, so they're pretty much rotate priorities. About three years, four years ago, it was protective clothing. Prior to that, had to do a lot with hazardous material equipment.
Do you know, going in, what their priorities are each year?
They provided us with a list, but as far as which priority's going to have preference, we don't know that.
Unless they hit those priorities.
Yeah. To do a better application.
How's the truck?
Yeah.
They're following those fires out. Napa.
I have a friend.
Burning all my grapes down.
I have a friend that lives -- I'm located in San Francisco, and last night they were on the phone telling me that they had paper, burnt paper, coming down from the sky, as well as all that ash.
In San Francisco?
Yeah. They've taken photos of it.
Geez.
I see, and Winster's picked it up, picked up all that debris and dumped it today.
It's amazing how fast, I mean, just watching what little I saw on television, it's just how fast that moved.
Fire woodstock is out. It's approximately 100 acres.
What were all this morning's developments, do you know?
We had a little accident with a new section in Sampson Road. It's pretty severe. They've extricated two people out of the vehicle, and we have a considerable hazmat situation.
No, I'm seeing it.
They have saddle tanks on the truck.
What?
Saddle tanks, the diesel tank, it's gone to parts, maybe down to diesel.
I don't know where these are.
How long ago?
I went out Friday, we haven't Saturday morning, Sunday morning, I drove home Sunday night.
I mean, did you pay a visit on Sunday?
Uh, no, those two were on Sunday, yeah.
I think I have a picture. Should I put them up?
All right.
Oh, yeah. They have beautiful feathers.
Hmm?
So beautiful feathers.
Yeah. Didn't I send you the picture?
I almost put it up on the managers' report, but...
Well, it's not the same as maple syrup, huh?
It tastes a little different. Do it right.
It tastes a little different. Is it organic?
The way we make it is, but I'm sure the grapes are not organic.
This is the thing I don't understand about maple syrup. There is organic maple syrup. My question is, what's not organic about making maple syrup? I guess the answer is, is some people probably larger commercial places fertilize their trees. I don't.
So you should get that certification.
Yeah.
Charge an extra 8%.
That's the point, I don't charge.
Oh, I'll take some of that. No charge.
What's 10% more than zero?
Yeah.
Price is right there.
We had that discussion a couple weeks ago. Maybe it wasn't here. It was an adventure, coming across the border this year was non-pleasant. There was a timed period, I don't know, 30 minutes, that I said, we're going to go through. I don't know why, normally it's 15 minutes before.
I heard a crazy story over the weekend, a guy going into Canada, and of course he gets that. The question is, do you have any firearms? The answer is no. And they pull him over and check, and find a shotgun under his seat. Come to find out, he bloned it to a friend. The friend couldn't find him, but stuck it in his truck when he returned it.
Oh, no.
Ouch.
Spent seven hours there. And at the last minute, they said, well, we decided not to arrest you.
That was coming in or going into Canada?
It was going into Canada.
Oh, wow. Can you take, if you're on a hunting trip, can you take weapons of your department?
You can register them, and you can register ahead of time, just speed you're going through customs, by serial number. You can register your gun, your dog, your boat. Or you can not, and it just takes longer. But that gun wasn't registered.
Well, I was just concerned about having three and a half ton of grapes baking in the back of the truck as I head home.
You're going to start fermenting early.
What do you mean, I'm not going to go through? Consider, I wonder if we haven't pressed at the, or at the distributor, if I can bring the buckets of must through. I actually thought about driving back to Montreal and having pressed all the grapes and bringing buckets of must through. It was about half an hour where I was really concerned I wasn't going to make it through. The rest of the time, at that point, then I realized that the agent knew they were wrong. I recognized the point, they knew they were wrong, then they just kept me there another hour, just to dicker around. But I wasn't so nervous at that point. I just, I know, just going to play the waiting game, because they can do whatever they want.
Oh, yeah.
Even if it's wrong, they can do whatever they want.
How is that with agriculture product?
Well, the thing is, it's a California product, it's a US product already. It was imported, and so there's no restrictions bringing them back. I've been doing it for 25 years. I have all my records from 25 years. I can't talk about your past 25 years, all I care about is today. Okay?
Hello, Art. We're waiting on the last minute of this public hearing. It's 5 o'clock. Public hearing is, the input portion of the public hearing hereby closed. We have a decision to make on whether or not to accept the funds, their motion.
Motion to approve. Second.
Is there any further discussion on the motion to approve accepting the funds? How those in favor?
All right.
Hold it. You honestly carry it?
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief.
Thanks, Chief.
Okay, we'll start the selectmen's meeting, and I'd like to start with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the good and the holy, holy, holy nation of the United States. And to this law which will never be disputed.
Thank you. We have no appointments on our agenda, so we'll start with the town manager's report.
We'll start with the Health Trust certificate for authorizing resolution. This is required by the Health Trust, by New Hampshire RSA 5B, and what it does is authorize an individual to sign on behalf of the town to enter into an agreement with Health Trust. It's, this agreement actually covers the health insurance year of 2016-17. And the resolution says that I hereby certify to Health Trust Inc. that the following is a true copy of a resolution adopted by the governing body of the town of Littleton at a meeting duly held on October 10th, 2017. Resolved that the town of Littleton shall participate as a member in the Health Trust pooled risk management program for the provision of a group medical and/or benefit plan in accordance with the application membership agreement in NHRS A5B. Be it resolved that, in the past, you've done the town manager?
Andrew Dorsett.
Andrew Dorsett is hereby authorized and directed to execute and deliver Health Trust on behalf of the town of Littleton the application and membership agreement substantially in the form presented at this meeting. I further hereby that the foregoing resolution remains in full force and effect without modification.
Okay, Andrew, we're going to, I'm going to move the vote on that down to board action. Go ahead.
Next, I just have a financial update for where we're at. This is as of the end of September. If you take a look, the total for our expenditures should be at 73.10%. And if you look at our total expenses on the bottom, we're at 72.84%. You can see we're pretty tight, but we're maintaining under budget. There's some items that will show up as expended further than that. Usually, the explanation, for example, like with workers' comp, that's all been paid out one time this year. Some were cemeteries, they had requested their appropriations ahead of time, rather than in a chronological way that would fit with the calendar. Our town insurance, this is billed in July, so we're up on that. And town meeting coverage, that's already done. It is a little bit over budget. And for other government, that's requested appropriations from ahead of time. You can see, for the most part, we're pretty close. And like another example's a library, another example of requesting their appropriation at the beginning of the year. Special detail, that is covered by outside funds. That's for the police department. When the police department is used to cover events for outside organizations, the, we pay them through payroll, but we bill out and are compensated for that.
So where's the revenue side of that? Where do they see that?
So, you have to go to the top, you look at our revenue, we're at 68%. Some areas, we're above. Sewer users, the sewer user bill makes up a major portion of that in the second billing. I don't believe we've really started collecting the majority of that yet, so...
I understand, but where will, so this additional...
Special detail.
Special detail that we bill out, where is it in revenues?
Yeah, if you go up to the top section in the page, it'll be the second from the bottom list.
Oh, Jesus, I missed it, thank you.
Yep. You can see that that's also up, so it's at 152% of what we had budgeted.
Okay. Andrew, I have a question regarding those three items, the sewer use, parking meter expenses, and special details, and Opera House, I guess. But three of them, theoretically, we're supposed to zero out at the end of the year. The revenue comes in and it's spent, right?
Right.
So sometimes we have money left over, and that stays in an account.
Right.
And isn't applied to the following year. What caught my eye was the sewer usage. We've spent $529,000, we've collected $499,000, so on paper, we're $30,000 in debt, but this is only the end of September.
Yeah, as you said, the revenue hasn't caught up yet, because the bill just went out.
Yeah, you'll see, yeah, our year-to-date revenues in 2016 were at 529, we're pretty close to that at 499 this year. That'll catch up. And, you know, on that point, that's a good point. If you remember last year, at the town meeting, the parking meter fund is an example of where those revenues will come in and sit in account. And historically, they had, the intention was to use those funds for parking improvements around town, and in order to balance the budget in the past, those funds had actually been used to cover some of the other expenses. And what we did in the budget last year was pull some of those expenses out of that and put them back into the operating budget. So the hope is that we're actually going to build up a little bit of a pool of funds that we can use for matching funds to do some parking improvements in town, which I don't know if you hear about it as much as I do, but it's a very popular topic, so...
I'm looking at just a couple of things, and it's clear to me, like, some, there's explanation, for example, some days we're already at 95%. Requesting appropriations ahead of time, it's fine, but I'm looking at assessing, we're already at almost 98%. What, are we, that strikes me as we're going to blow that budget, is that...
That doesn't look right. I'll have to check into that. I know that the contract that we have now is for, oh, I'll have to look at that. I think that maybe some of the legal fees might have been put in there for some of the utilities, you know, we had PSNH, DirecTV...
So you think they should be moved to legal, or do we keep legal fees for assessing in assessing, not only?
Yeah, I had underlined that one as well, but we could have maybe paid them off at this point for later.
They're on a monthly invoice.
They are, okay.
So I'll check into that. I'm guessing that we probably put legal where we shouldn't have.
So do all legal fees go under legal, or do we have different legal fees for different departments that we track separately?
So that's a good question. I think that it may have been done that way in the past, but what we, what we do as of right now is, they're all lumped into one, and like, I think, you can see it right there, it's about, for legal, we have about $97,600. And when I look at this figure, the year-to-date expenses, I think that...
Yeah, we're seen to be relatively low on legal, so maybe that's... Anyways, I just, it's coming from one department here, they're just, for me to be able to compare next, this is my first year through this, for me to be able to compare next year, just want to make sure they're in the right place.
Definitely, yeah. What we'll do too, is as we get closer to the end of the year, we go through a lot of the expenditures and revenues to make sure they've all been classified right when they're entered. We'll probably have an adjustment. I'll say definitely on legal and assessing.
Thank you.
I have one question on the warrant articles. And that had to do with the Runnick Park debt replacement, we spent $9,300 on a $20,000 item. I just didn't know what that may have, what it cost me of that test.
So that is a, I believe, a non-lapsing article. This was for the hiring of professional services to help with the planning.
The architect firm down from Ashland.
Yeah, 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 and...
Simian?
Yeah, and we're still working with them. I believe we have a plan, another planning meeting with them shortly.
That's a bill coming.
Yeah, yeah.
So that may be a bill that if we paid to them?
Yeah, and this one, it's invoiced based on where we're at with the project and how many hours they put in. So we're not far enough along that we should be at 100% yet. This will be carried over. We'll be continuing to work with them next year. I don't anticipate they'd be ready for a project for town meeting to ask for any kind of a answer.
Well, and that was phases too, so, you know, when they complete this phase, then the whole next phase is another warrant.
That's right.
Okay, thank you. Next?
Yeah, one other thing, just to give you an update on, the question came up at the last meeting about Mill Street, and right now, we really have kind of two phases of activity happening. We'll be having a stakeholders' meeting with Mill Street property owners in the near future, and we have to make and adjust, you know, our setup down there. We have a short-term plan, which involves, as we briefly discussed last time, protection of pedestrians and traffic flow during the construction over shillings. It's a private project that impacts our public roadway, and so we have to react as based on what their schedule is. So in the near future, we'll be making some adjustments. We'll be having a stakeholders' meeting just to listen to them and bring those up. There's a longer-term plan that's really dictated by Federal Highway, New Hampshire Department of Transportation, under the Transportation Alternatives Program, that's going to actually fund a portion of the changes on Mill Street. And that one, we can't have a public, we can't have an official public meeting that satisfies the grant funds until they give us the go-ahead for it. We have to get each step of that process pre-approved. But we will also be having a stakeholders' meeting for the long term. That was likely to take place, I would guess, in 20, early 2018, so we'll be having meetings for each section of town that's going to be impacted by the TAP project, and this will be one. So, just to keep you in perspective...
For your sake, I've been hearing some noise in the form of complaints about the lack of meetings, and I think a lot of people don't understand that the long-term project isn't there yet to have public input meetings. Hopefully, once the confusion goes away, then the excitement goes away too with it. The short-term stuff, I actually had a complaint today and called Andrew, and he was in the process of setting up Thursday's meeting, so...
What time is that, maybe by Thursday?
So it's a property owner-stakeholder meeting, and it's going to be after 5 o'clock?
Yeah, it's not public.
It's not public.
Stakeholders only. Which is about 30 people, 30 entities.
Yeah, about 30, yeah.
I heard a rumor there's a third activity, building scaffolds down on the river. I don't know who that's put in the street.
Scaffolding?
Scaffold, no, scaffolds.
Oh, well, does it have to do with some hangings, lynchings? Yeah, I think that...
Well, there's a lot of, there's a lot of feelings.
Yeah, there's one for the town manager, and one for the chairman, and that...
I thought the newest board member always had to go...
They don't make rope, I mean, for me.
So that's a constant work in progress. And, you know, some of the realities of the situation have to do with maintenance and that sort of thing too, winter maintenance, which is coming up.
I may have misunderstood earlier. I didn't think I did at the time, but now I'm thinking I did, because time's gone by and nothing's happened. I had understood that there was going to be a flurry of big delivery items, like concrete and all of this stuff, and that some things were going to be changed after that.
That's correct.
I thought that would have been done already. Is that not, that flurry is not over yet?
I think it's, that part is substantially complete. Joe, from your meetings with CCI, you feel like the major portion is now kind of winding down, or done for the large trucks?
Yes, the concrete construction, the major earthquake, concrete construction has been wrapped up. Yes, the concrete construction, the major earthquake, concrete destruction has been wrapped up for the most part. But, so your recollection was correct. The second part of that, identifying the change down there also, we also identified this Columbia State. Last year, when I wanted to work on the sewer system down there, I, I elected to wait till after Columbia State, that things slowed down. Some of the tour buses stopped coming, would easily impact traffic there. This year, we identified this, let's, let's look at the construction sequence, one of the things we're wrapping up. And okay, when a little bit of a lull from the action, break of the action occurs, and identified that previously last year as Columbia State. So two days seemed to melt, maybe the construction finished a week earlier than Columbia State, so I'm not quite sure.
Now that you mention that, I remember you saying, sorry, I forgot all about that.
Kind of melted, blended these two components to, to get to the block boss we have now.
Okay. Anything else? You good? We've got nothing scheduled under other business, we have nothing scheduled under old business. Under new business, we have a right-of-way access and a road name request. You want to bring us up to speed on that, Andrew?
Yep. So there's a property owner who has a right-of-way access that's off of Gannon Road. The property owner has requested that the private road be named for E nine-one-one purposes. We've reviewed that with E nine, state E nine-one-one. Also, Chief Mercieri and I have been in discussions about what kind of impact that has versus just issuing a driveway permit for emergency response and for impact of the state NFPA fire department access roads requirements. So according to that, the chief has highlighted that Section eighteen point two-three, that this becomes a private roadway. The, the road will have to be approved by fire department and meet access road standards, which I think may create an undue burden, unplanned undue burden on the property owner. Whereas if we, if we were to deny the request for the road to be named and become a private road, the E nine-one-one number would be a Gannon Road, and would, you could just operate under the regular driveway access, which I believe the driveway meets the requirements for that now.
The structure is in line.
That's correct.
So we can't assign the number, is that true?
If we approve it, we can.
If you approve it, you can. It creates some difficulty too for emergency response. The E nine-one-one address, I believe, would become a line, which would be a Lisbon emergency response. So I think that by, by allowing the road to be named as a private road, it creates a lot of, on, on his part, maybe on, things that hadn't been planned on.
Well, the worst of which is having to bring the road up to standards, which he doesn't know about.
Yeah, I mean, I assume he wouldn't be crazy about that. I just wonder, do we have a responsibility here to do it? We don't, I mean, the guidelines say three units or more on a road, right, needs to be named? Isn't that the state guideline?
I think those are subdivision guidelines. This, this standard deals exclusively with private common access, emergency vehicle access to the.
And so it's a different standard if there's not more than two homes that trigger? And that's where these standards come into play, because just be one house. After you get to be three homes, I think there's probably even another higher standard beyond eighteen point two-three.
I'm probably wrong, because it's been a lot of years since I've actually looked at those, but my understanding was that the guidelines were that to name, that, that you should name.
Both requirement to name.
To name it, which is what's being requested here, right, to name it.
That's right, after you have three properties.
After you have three, if it serves three or more properties, and it's only serving one.
That's right.
It's a private right-of-way to just that one property.
That's correct.
So I think under the guidelines, we wouldn't name it anyways, would we?
We don't have to.
We don't have to.
We don't have to. He's made, he's made a request that we do. Is there any consensus here among those of you who work at this every day as to, I mean, it sounds like it shouldn't be approved.
That's right.
What, what we're trying to do is we're just trying to eliminate a lot of the confusion and also protect the homeowners. Advise them accordingly, because although, you know, the driveway begins in Littleton, as, as Tommy Anderson said, they down nine-one, they may expect to have a little bit of response, which in fact, they probably do not, but they have response from Lisbon. So then it has to come all the way into Littleton to access the driveway to get to property alignment. Creates a lot of confusion. We're trying to eliminate some of that. As far as access, we've experienced lots of difficulties trying to get the residential houses, short driveways and long driveways. Whether it's the grade of the driveway, the lack of maintenance, the low hanging trees, or the road is just awful. Well, we can't, we can't get the truck down, down the road. I do know that Joanna does have a letter that she does draft to the homeowners explaining that they have to maintain the driveway north of us to get access. And we certainly will send that to the homeowners. I, myself, would prefer to see them maintain the driveway so we can get access without any incidents. As we've had in, you know, last year, we did have an incident with the apparatus, but we stood off the road because of conditions. So that's the kind of things we're trying to avoid. Having the proper width, having the proper grade, having the right road surface helps us tremendously and also helps the property owner. Although, in order to, in order to designate this driveway as a fire road access road, that would take board approval in order to do so. And then we would have to enforce those specifications of those standards onto the property owner.
So I, I feel like I'm hearing conflicting things here, so are you suggesting that assigning a name to it may cause confusion? But on the same time, if they want to do that, they have to bring the road up to a standard that would actually help you get your vehicles there. So if they want to do it, why wouldn't we let them do it? I'm not, I'm not, I'm not understanding that, the conflicting positions on this.
Part of letting them do it is imposing unknown road standards, unknown to them, road standards on them.
No, no, I understand that. But if they're willing to do that, that's only going to improve your ability to access the property.
Right.
I'm just, I'm not sure I understand it. I clearly don't understand it because I got a lot of blank faces looking at me.
Yeah, a little insight to it, to your request for knowledge between the bodies. It's, the driveway now, it's wider than the standing driveway. Not the entrance so much, but it would be helpful maybe to talk to the applicant. What, what, what his intention is and what he really wants and what would be the best way for us all to be surveyed and he included. He is my next door neighbor, or say that, I live right across the street from him, so I see this, the structure of the driveway every day. I see what he's doing.
Well, are you suggesting that we table this until we have that discussion?
I would think that if he's, he's not here, I don't see him here, that I would suggest that we reach out to him, yes, and table it.
Thank you. This isn't public discussion. We can discuss it, it's not open to the public.
Gotcha.
Anything more we want to discuss on it? So that ends that. We will bring that back to board action because we need to act on the, well, in one of three ways, yes, no, or postpone. That brings us, the agenda down to public comment. Is there any public comment?
I should probably comment to Mill Street. Can you bring that slide back up again for me? Mr. Chairman, because you said you had a complaint about this. I probably am there longer than anyone else as far as timelines, and the first one in lasts about every day. See what happens back there. The safety that Joe has provided us with the S R walkway, with his decision that he executed was awesome. It served the purpose during the high volume, it was a good exercise. May need to be done again next year if the soul allows it to be done. His interest of pulling the, pulling the concretes, no problem with me at all. I don't have an issue about that. We lived back there for a number of years, literally twenty years, and it morphed into this parking situation that has turned into a little bit of a convoluted mess. But the halfway choice is a solution that you leave the vehicles parked that are in front of the studio school, those three spots there. The real access congested point is where Chudders receives his delivery. He's really only entity that is receiving a rear door delivery, UPS, FedEx, Ross Express, FedEx Freight, you can track the trailers. So if the space is past his loading dock, which would allow for the trailer to unload into his D D right-of-way to access the rear of his property, it's the only one that has that right now, when you look at that, would be a successful piece. The other congested area is the, making the corner where the tractor trailers in the winter time can't stop, they spin. So that's why Joe needs that width there. So maybe a consideration of whether you allow parking in those spots might be something from a public safety standpoint. But we have definitely benefited by traveling in the back of Mill Street and having people walk in a designated area. Whether it's ADA compliant, whether it's legal or not, I don't know, but it certainly allows us to flow without stopping for people walking in the middle of the road. It's been a godsend. Even the painted crosswalks at the top of my entrance behind our buildings, they seem to follow that. Tourists actually follow those lines. It's amazing. I mean, God, if we get them to follow that, it's, I joked with Joe when he did it, he was wasting paint and time and energy, but it actually worked. So what we were left with this summer worked, what we'll go back to, I don't know, but if there was some space allowed just for that delivery, I think that's the happy zone. I think that's the happy median that will allow us to still travel through there and make it work.
Thank you for your thoughts and your input. Is there any other public comment? See your hand up, Rudy.
Yeah. Unfortunately, you know, I'm not agreeing with my friends over there on the Mill Street because I was with them Wednesday. And unfortunately, you know, to get out of, through Mill Street, I actually parked my truck and directed, you know, traffic to a truck full of cement to go through and not into no cars, no left and no right. It took me about, probably about twenty minutes to get out, you know, from that particular area of, of Mill Street. Second one, where, you know, I mean, I don't know the way you guys do business up here, but I understand that when a private entity does some kind of work on its property, okay? Even if it's through the town street, which is Mill Street, they should have somebody over there to direct the traffic. Where I come from, usually they have a, a police officer, which whoever does the construction is supposed to pay the police officer. Or they should have a flagman that directs the traffic. It's not so easy the way, you know, hard, you know, explained. Because I was over there, it's a mess. It's complete a mess. Especially when the trucks that go in, it delivers cement. It's something that, you know, if you don't watch out, unless you want some, you know, some accident to happen and stuff like that. But to me personally, I send an email to the chief of police and to the town manager that they should have somebody to direct the traffic over there. And the people that does the construction, it should pay for that. This is all over the world, not just in Littleton and stuff like that, okay? Now, you guys know when I do that, you know, I think something is going to happen, you know, and but, you know, the cement block that you guys have put over there, that's, please, I don't even want to talk about. But I suggest that to that time, they still have a construction down a Mill Street. You guys should put somebody over there to take care of the traffic.
Thank you, Rudy.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Any public comment?
I'll just clarify that for him.
Thank you.
What he's, what he's explaining is, and what he's experiencing, Ruby, is, is the concrete board in this foundation, as will testimony from your buildings and grounds and Department of Public Works gentlemen, that's done. What you're experiencing is, is the unloading and the jamming of a tractor trailer. FedEx thinks that they have the right to block up traffic, so they pull up the GT unit and they start unloading, which then makes the congestion that Ruby and others have experienced in short period of time. The, the construction people who are actually running the, in fairness to those people, they actually do go out and pull the truck in and back it up into their area. They actually bring it into their facility. They have a massive insurance liability. They don't want to really be on public domains. So what we see happening is as they go into these two little cul-de-sacs, unload and get off, we will experience in the future, short-term delays, which you will experience again when the delivery trucks have to unload from the street level and bring the wooden on. We'll experience that. But as January, you know, November, December and January, you can ball down through those streets and there's really no movement. So in fairness to the public works of trying to make it so you can plow, push the snow back and still have room for deliveries, I think we'll be more than adequate with the space that we have. We'll get through it. It'll be a little bit of an inconvenience at times, but we'll get through it. It'll be okay.
Thank you. Is there anyone else with public comment? Hearing none, I will close the public comment session of the meeting. Which now takes us to the board action. We have two things we need to execute or not. The first is the health trust certificate. I would entertain a motion to do or not do that.
Some of it.
Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I think it's, this one is previous certificate.
Let me go ahead with the next one. The next one and the last one is the right-of-way issue, which we are supposed to grant or deny. I'm guessing with the probable cost of bringing that road to specs that the applicant, we assume is not aware of, that we tabled this until such time as he and or she can make an informed decision. That's only my suggestion. If you fellows want to pass it or deny it, that's okay too.
I think we should table it as well.
Do you make a motion with that effect?
Second.
Further discussion on it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those are our two board actions. The next thing on the agenda is the approval of some back minutes. And I'm starting with May eighth, two thousand seventeen.
Chairman, I make a motion to approve.
All right, let me cut to. May eighth. Okay, there's motion to approve and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
May twenty-fourth. Oh, I skipped May eleventh. May eleventh, excuse me.
Chairman, I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Post. Carry. May twenty-fourth.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve.
May twenty.
Oh, second.
I've got a problem with May twenty-fourth. First paragraph, little over halfway down. We're referring to a statement Mr. Hadlock made. He said this law court has a judiciary responsibility. I believe he said fiduciary. And a couple sentences later, it's repeated. I guess I knew what Mr. Hadlock meant. With that correction, is there a motion to approve?
So, so, some of it.
Second? All those in favor? All those in favor?
Aye.
And the last one is June twelfth.
Chairman, I make a motion to approve.
Um, I have a change on, one, two, three, near the, the last paragraph on page four, page four. We talk about Greg Eastman and Carol Caswell. I believe it was Taylor Caswell.
On, uh, page two, under Section Three Enforcement, this has to do with the, uh, dumpster ordinance.
Yep.
Uh, in the middle of the paragraph, it says, "These plastic tops are not adequate for bears as well as critters such as raccoons. Littleton ranks fourth in the highest bear encounters." I may have said complaints. That was incorrect. It really, when you look at the report, it, it talks about bear encounters.
You said complaints, that's correct.
Yeah, it should have been. Well, I'm not sure if I said it or not. I'll take the blame for it. In the report, they refer to it as encounters.
Well, we've put parentheses, encounters, and we, we'll cover. Is there a motion to approve the June twelfth minutes? With those corrections?
Some more. Second.
Any further discussion?
You know, just that I'd like to, uh, nothing to do with changing the minutes, but I just want to let you know that our attorney, uh, one of our attorneys has the dumpster ordinance. He is adding language regarding, um, air cooking. Uh, he hasn't gotten back to me yet. That's why we're a little bit, you know, behind on getting this moved through the, through the board.
Let's go back to the June twelfth minutes and vote on the motion. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
No, all carried. That concludes the selectmen's meeting for today. We do have to go into non-public session under RSA ninety-one dash A colon three comma, Roman numeral two, parentheses D. "Consideration of the acquisition, sale, or lease of real or personal property, which we discussed in public, would likely benefit a party or parties whose interests are adverse to those of the general community." Thank you.